Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 2019 State of the District Address. My name is Stephanie Brown, Principal here at Lincoln High School. Thank you for joining us this evening.[15.38][15.38][applause] I will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now please stand for the presentation of colors by Lincoln High School Army JROTC I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stay standing. To sing our National Anthem, please welcome Lincoln High School student Dana Salas Sanchez.[70.72][70.72][applause] Please be seated. At this time, I'd like to welcome School Board President, Dr. Sharon Whitehurst Page to the stage.[183.12][183.12][applause]
Good evening.
Good evening.
One more time? Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to say thank you all for being here tonight, and I would like to begin by officially calling the November 19th Special Meeting to Order at 5:00 PM, a little after, with all members present. I would also like to express our appreciation for those individuals who have made tonight possible. First, I would like to thank North Island Credit Union for sponsoring tonight's event. Are you here? Would you please stand if you are?[236.12][236.12][applause] Yes. North Island is a valued district partner that supports our academic initiatives as well as events, and we have with us today Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer Robert O'Grady and his team, so we can't thank you enough, but thank you for supporting us. Next, I'd like to thank everyone at Lincoln High School for hosting tonight's event. Let's give them a round of applause.[270.13][270.13][applause] I'd like to thank the Jazz Quartet from the School of Creative and Performing Arts and Music Director Tamara Page for the outstanding entertainment they provided during the reception.[290.44][290.44][applause] Thank you to Lincoln High School student Dana Salas Sanchez. Does she hit all the notes?
Yes.
Yes, she did a beautiful rendition of the National Anthem. I'm excited to say that we'll be hearing from more Lincoln High School students later in the program. Thank you to the district's Food Services Catering Department for catering the food for this evening's reception. District folk, they're out-serving, but thank you.[326.83][326.83][applause] And finally, thanks to Principals Stephanie Brown and Geraldo Constantino from Lincoln High School and from our staff, Isabella McNeil, the Communications Department, and from the bottom of my heart, I'd like to thank Melissa Hamilton, Martha Corales, and Marty Stoltz from the School Board Services for coordinating tonight's event. This event began way back in the spring. As soon as I came on board as a president, they said, "Let's get moving, Sharon. We've got to decide where we're going to host this event." So let's give them a round of applause for their work.[371.11][371.11][applause] At this time, I would like to invite my fellow board members to join me onstage to say
Thank you, President Whitehurst Page. I'm Richard Barrera. I represent District D on the Board, which comprises most of the schools that feed into San Diego High School and the majority of the schools that feed into Hoover High School. Just want to very much take tonight to thank everybody who comes together and believes in the promise of our public education system, our students, our parents, our teachers, our classified staff, our administrators, our community leaders. Where we have made progress as a district, it has been because we come together and we've worked together and we believe in what our students, our young people, are capable of. Where we don't make progress in the district is when we get bogged down, disagreed with each other, and not being able to move past those disagreements. So I know how passionately people believe in our public schools, and I also know what we're capable of as an entire community when we come together and focus and work together. And so, as you see tonight, some of the progress that we hope to report out, just know that doesn't happen by a few people. That happens by all of us coming together and working to support our students. So thanks very much.[488.02][488.02][applause]
Thank you, Richard. I'm Kevin Beiser, and I am thrilled to be here this evening because we are celebrating our work that we've been embarked upon for many, many years, culminating tonight in a recap of the last year's worth of accomplishments and challenges and opportunities to do even better by all of our children. Over the last many years, we've accomplished great things for our kids. Music in every school so that there's equal access to that kind of educational opportunity. And we're joined tonight by the Director of Appa, Russ Sperling. Thank you very much to you and all the music teachers in our school district. We're also joined by a very strong advocate for public education and equality and equity, Dr. Weber. Dr. Weber served as a Board Member on the San Diego Unified School Board, where she learned the value of making sure that we're doing everything we can to lift up underrepresented and underserved segments of our community, because public education is the hammer that can break that cycle of poverty that is afflicting more and more of our families and our children. So let's redouble our efforts this year and next year to make sure that we have the funding necessary to do everything we can for all of our students.
I'm John Lee Evans from District D. Happy to be here tonight. We're talking about the state of the district, and the state of the district is really the state of our city. The schools belong to all of us. I was just talking with a gentleman before I came in who has worked for years with Boys to Men, embracing young men and mentoring them and teaching them the values that are so important. This is the type of involvement that we need, all of the community working together. I see another person here who was a mother, who was a volunteer in the schools all the time there in the schools, formed a foundation, worked at the foundation to help their school have more money. Sabrina Bazo is that person who's here. We see many other people who are teachers, parents, community members, who have worked and strive to make our schools what they are. The schools are not any one of us, they are all of us together, so let's talk together tonight about what we can do to make them even better in the coming years.
I'm Dr. Mike McCary. I represent Subdistrict C, the C for coastal part of San Diego. Each year, we gather for an overview of the state of the district, and this year, it is very special because it is the final year of our vision, 2020, that we set in 2010. And we are honored by the attendance, San Diego County Superintendent of School, Paul Gotheart, and California State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman. And we are pleased to see Kaiheem Jackson, who was San Diego Unified's Director of Government Relations before Tony Thurman selected him to be a State Deputy Superintendent. This collaborative effort between our local county and state educational systems is essential to expanding our collective capacity to effectively meet the educational challenges of the 21st Century. Welcome to the San Diego Unified School District's 2019 State of the District Address. The outstanding accomplishments, assessment of current needs, and the plan for 2019-20 school year that will be shared by Superintendent Cindy Martin are based on a core set of beliefs that drive our continuous improvement process. While Superintendent Martin will highlight what was accomplished, the outcomes and the factual data points that demonstrate performance and progress, I want to encourage us to go deeper than the what was accomplished. I want us to think about why it was accomplished. I believe it is the why that drives the who and the how, which leads to the outcomes or the what. I believe it is the why that constitutes the system of beliefs that form the basis of education efficacy. It is this belief system or spirit that is the heart of the teaching and learning process, and it is the essence of the art and science of the teaching profession. But how does one see or experience this belief system or spirit? I believe this spirit is manifested during student conversations, teacher-student interactions, teacher-parent contacts, professional development engagements, and the multitude of classroom, school, and community activities and events. In short, we see the spirit by listening to the talk and observing the walk. As I visit schools, observe classrooms, engage with students, administrators, teachers, staff, parents, community members, and our business partners, the spirit of the San Diego School District becomes more and more visible, and it becomes increasingly clear that we are on the right path for developing a more perfect experience that strives for equity and prepares each and every child for college, career, civic engagement, and what I call global acuity. So, as we listen today to the what has been accomplished, be attentive to the why. When in 2010, we set the goal to be the best urban school district in the state and nation in 2020, and listen to the why, we will set a new 10-year goal to be among the best urban school districts in the world by 2030. At this time, we'd like to share a short video that highlights the district's role in fostering the future success of our students, beginning in pre-K through high school, by preparing them for college, career, and beyond. Notice the what and the why.
If you look at the United Force to come out and lead a state or a federal government and say we create, your point is actually communication. So if our job is to prepare kids for the real world, we need to give students love. Engineering is not our responsibility.[983.13][983.13][music]
This room is of the teacher that really impacted my night class in high school. She said something along the lines of, "If you are not the best surgeon yourself, then what the heck is reading possible?"
Oh, my gosh, it's so rare that teachers can't go out and see me at law, right? We're kind of like, you're a baker, or you know what happens when the cake turns out of hot, right? You know, you're supposed to be up, but you never actually notice it. It's not okay.
She makes a lot of you.
We have brothers and sisters who live along the line. We have doctors who are here, we have lawyers that spearhead judges, we have educators, life strength, the office strength, and really the chance that lets a court incur the fire or see it. See the King of the Capitol next to it.[1043.13][1043.13][music]
It's pretty cool because you resemble, if you're like very good at anything, like country or something, then I can understand them a little bit.
Being my language, being able to read and write in at least two languages helps you to communicate with other people, just in terms of enjoyment of life overall, and certainly in terms of career.[1102.13][1102.13][music]
I feel pretty prepared for what I've reached now, basically about dress, some different ways I can really practice and walk and manage. I also learned about scholarships, and I feel like that's something that would be really helpful for me to get to that path, to that school, for career or more.
There's a lot of people who work with this community who only have the opportunity, but here everywhere I guess you do have the opportunity. So in the future, if I want to get in the ranks, once I get out of service, I'll be back. So I know how to manage a good resume, and that's using the PhD I possess in my campus. First-generation graduate, I'm proud of that.
I'm not a parent, so I'll study the first one in the family. Today, I'm interviewing about my profession. I want to become a university student, like here in Hoover, like all I can do is somehow support the fact that I'm a student.
By empowering our students to make a positive impact in the world right now and put them in a position to succeed so they're able to make a positive impact in San Diego and in the world the moment they leave our campus.[1183.83][1183.83][music][1198.03][1198.03][applause]
We have some special guests I'd like to recognize this evening. The first special guest is Assemblywoman Dr. We also have representatives from the following offices, Congressman Scott Peters, Assemblywoman Lorena Gonzalez, Assemblyman Todd Gloria. We also have the State Superintendent, Tony Thurman, who's going to be joining us this evening. I think he's hopping off of a flight right now and making his way over, and the Deputy State Superintendent, Kai Jackson. Please let's welcome them.[1241.53][1241.53][applause] Now it's time for a little entertainment. I'd like to introduce the talented Lincoln High School Drum Line, led by Sierra Johnson, Wasn't he awesome? My favorite is the hornet roll, personally. So I'd like to introduce, oh, excuse me, and now I'd like to bring back to the stage our Board President, Dr.
As Board President, it's my choice where we do the State of the District speech every year, and after meeting some of these extraordinary young men and women here tonight, I think you can see why I picked Lincoln. Let's give them a round of applause again.[1719.53][1719.53][applause] I do think they had one of the best drummers. I think he is one of the best. Don't tell any of the schools I said that, though, okay? We know every one of these extraordinary young people has a mother, a grandmother, father, grandfather, a coach, a counselor, or teacher behind them, someone to inspire them. I see that myself in my local Rotary Club, the Southeast San Diego Rotary Club, where the club works directly with some of the young people. The students always mention to us that there's someone there for them, and that's why they're involved in school and excited about it. San Diego Unified is very lucky to have a host of community leaders who are there for us. They've helped us over the years to lift up children, to accomplish amazing things. Just want to talk for a moment about one program that we have at the Elementary Institute of Science. Do you know that- Do you know that we have some high school girls who have just earned their pilot's license to fly drones? How many can do that? This is a part of the Girls Take Flight Program. And we had nine students to go through the program this time, and all of them have been certified as drone pilots now. So that's amazing. That gives them the opportunity to go ahead and get a job in that field right now. So that's one of the things that we're excited about in terms of our partners. Do you also know that from this school, students every year for the past four years have been going to Europe as a part of the Rotary Club's sponsorship? The Southeast San Diego Club in conjunction with the Club 33, which is the main club of San Diego, we partner and we send students to Europe every year. That's an exciting program. And our elementary school students, they're becoming junior marine biologists. Thanks to the Ocean Discovery Institute, some of those students have never even seen the ocean, but now they're becoming marine biologists. This is incredible. Our students are incredible. And that's the message for this evening. We can accomplish amazing things together when we make, when we work together for all of our students. That is, our focus has to be on working together. Then we can do amazing things. Here's the challenge. And I'm not sure if our State Superintendent has come in yet. Did anybody see him? No, he's not, he's parking, she says. But I have a challenge for him. He is walking in hopefully soon. So as soon as he gets here, I want us to just think about the amount of money that we're putting in our schools. The voters of this state promised us that California would be in the top 10 of all states. That is concerning funding of education. Does anybody in here know where we are right now? Forty-seven, forty-eight? I mean, we're not in the top 10, right? We're in the bottom five. So we have something there that we need to take care of. Our State Superintendent, when he comes in, we're, we know that he's been here working with us, trying to help us. If we had the proper funding, we'd have an additional $5,000 more to spend on each and every student in our schools today. Imagine what we could do for our students. Instead of sending four or five students to Europe, we could send many more. Rather than having a few students to go through the drone program, we could have a lot more students doing that. I believe that every child, every child should have the opportunity to participate in activities like that. But that takes all of us working together to support our children. Our State Superintendent was a state senator, and he's fought, we know for a fact that he has fought long and hard to get more resources for our schools. We know that we have a champion up there, and we're grateful for his support. He's not here, so we can't even applaud him, but when he walks in, let's give him a round of applause and he won't move on. We also have some champions here in San Diego. I mentioned the Elementary Institute of Science and the Girls Take Flight Program. And I talked about them having the pilot's license and so forth, but they didn't just do it. It took some people helping them. So we know that we have a cadre of women who were willing to help coach them. On last Friday evening, I was at their activity at the Elementary Institute of Science, and it was amazing to see them, to know what they've gone through to accomplish that task. And we know also that our State Superintendent has put in monies and his support, his resources to help us with STEAM because our state's emphasis is on work around the equity thing. Okay, let me just talk for a moment about a couple of heroes in our community. Some of you may know her and some of you may not know her. Dr. Dorothy Smith, one of my role models, one of my heroes. She's a champion for education. Did I hear someone giving her an applause over there? Down through the years, she had the vision to look out and see, now we're beginning to implement some of those programs in literacy that she talked about when she was on the school board. Another one of my heroes is Mary Cassiberry. And for the San Diego Education Fund, she is a model for our students who goes out, works with our students on a regular basis to ensure that once they graduate from high school, if they're going to become a teacher, we'll give them a scholarship from the Education Fund, and then we move forward with ensuring that Mary works to support these students. It's not only the women. We have someone else in our midst today that I'd like to stand. Some of you may know him already. Roosevelt Johnson, where are you seated? He's our Middle School Teacher of the Year, and I believe we have our High School Teacher of the Year here also. Together again. Thank you. I just want to say that I want to mention Roosevelt tonight because he started a man-up club at his school. When you ask children, what do they need? They just need an individual who will support them, who will encourage them, who will let them know it's okay. And you know, it's interesting because even though my nephew is 31 years old, I sent him a little text over the weekend and said, "I love you, keep up the good work." And he got so excited, and he sent me a note that, "Love you Aunt Sharon." So it doesn't matter what age they are, but thank you for looking out for our students and giving them that club opportunity and being there to ensure that they grow into responsible men. We also have Boys to Men here tonight. I think someone, yes, stand up so they can see who you are. And we know that, that you're working with, I believe you're working here at Lincoln High School is one of your schools. And we're- Okay, thank you. So we know that you're doing some things here that are successful and also working with the Knox children. We have some other heroes and cheros in the community. And I told you all, let's give him a round of applause. Our State Superintendent has just walked in, and we're giving you a round of applause. Welcome, welcome to San Diego. But I also want to mention a couple of other folks, like Bishop Terrell Fletcher, who works with Lincoln High School to do some things. And we have Bishop Roy Dixon, the Reverend George Walker Smith, several other, I shouldn't say several, but a lot of other folks in this community are working to help make our schools better and to help our children. We have some great partnerships with organizations like the Deltas, the CAAs, our D program, the Earth Lab, even entities like Qualcomm, the BAPA Foundation. I did, yes, we have a couple of board members over there. I know we have a quorum because three of us are here. But please stand so they can see you also from the BAPA Foundation. That's the Visual and Performing Arts Foundation. We have the NCNWA Organization, the National Council for Negro Women, the San Diego Ed Fund they talked about earlier, and the Boys to Men Group. And I've spoken already about Roosevelt Johnson, but I want to tell you about a program. We had a press conference with Roosevelt Johnson and some other city leaders from National University. We announced a new program to help more people from this community become teachers. We said that if you work hard, you graduate from San Diego Unified School District, you go on to City College, and then National University, and if you want to be a teacher, you will not have to pay for college, gotten scholarships to help you with it. It's a wonderful opportunity. These kinds of partnerships are how we will create the next generation of champions for our community. These young people who come from southeastern San Diego and want to come back to southeastern San Diego to teach will be the role models our children deserve to see. Now, we have to say, this is good, but there is a lot more work to be done. Where are the opportunities for our other children? Where are the jobs for them? That is a challenge I want to put forth to the city. That's my pet project right now. Some people say we've got to get the schools perfect before the jobs come. I maintain, you know, the chickens or the eggs, which ones come first, which one comes first? Our children need to see people working in entities. I'm challenging a Qualcomm or somebody, "Come and put a building here, have some workers here so our children will know that, yes, I've been working that building also. I can do some things." Our children need to know that when they work hard, they go to school, they come back, there are jobs right here in this community. And I think we all need to get on board with trying to help the schools to ensure that we have jobs available for our children. There's a gap, but we can close it. We're on the path to do that. But it's going to take all of us working together, not apart. Together. That is the message. Let's work together for all of our children. Thank you. And with that, I'll invite back Stephanie Brown to introduce us next speaker.
All right, so it is my pleasure to introduce our next speaker. He is an educator, a social worker, a public school parent who has served the people of California for 10 years in elected office. We are proud to call him a partner in making quality education for all students a top priority, and we're honored to have him as our guest speaker tonight. Please help me welcome to the stage State Superintendent of Public Education, the Honorable Tony Thurman.
Thank you, Principal Brown. Good evening. Come on, y'all. Good evening. Buenas noches. We're going to represent. We are here in the building. Give yourselves a round of applause. Give yourselves a hand clap. You know, you don't let the weather deter you from anything, right? I just swam up here from Sacramento. I think I brought the rain with me. Sorry about that. They told me it don't rain in Southern California, but we need the rain. It is a pleasure to be with you tonight. I just want to bring greetings from the California Department of Education and congratulations on some of the great things that you will hear tonight about how San Diego Unified is doing, how students are doing, and the good news that you will hear. I was just reflecting on the way here that every time I've come to San Diego, good things have happened. I haven't had a lot of time to come to San Diego because they keep me busy all over the state, but the times that I have been here, something good has happened. Here's, here's the report card. My first visit in an education context was also in a meeting where Dr. White-Purstine was present. It was to Claremont High School to learn more about your STEAM programs. I was a candidate at the time. Shortly after, I had the opportunity to be at a panel with your board member, Mr. Barrera, where we talked about college affordability and how we're going to help our students who not only need support for their tuition, but our students who are hungry and they are homeless and need support. And then after being sworn in, just about after day one, the governor asked me to lead a task force on how we promote charter reform. And your superintendent Cindy Martin joined that task force and brought very thoughtful ideas about how we support all of our students wherever they attend, in a traditional public school or a charter public school. And then I got an invitation from Assemblymember Gloria who said, "Hey, we need you to come here. We're doing a bill together that focuses on how we support LGBTQ students." So I came on back to San Diego and we talked about our support for our students. And then my colleague and a 40-year educator, she's going to tell me I got the number wrong, Assemblymember Dr. Weber, came and helped us to do a better job of shaping how we deliver ethnic studies for students in our state. And she's delivered a message on how we support all students, but especially given appreciation for the lowest performing students in our state. Is that enough? Can I tell you anymore? I did come back last week to hear from some of your business leaders who talked about the jobs that your board president just talked about. Qualcomm was not there, but we're going to call them together and tell them they need to come here and make sure they provide jobs. And I know that you have great, you could put your hands together for that. That's a great place to put your hands together. It's a great place for a hand clap. I know that was you, Richard. Thank you. It's just, as I think about what you're talking about tonight, I think it's great for us to hear your lessons learned and for us to look at ways that we can replicate that and to listen to what your challenges are. Because for every community that has success, for every school community that has success, we know that there are still challenges. I've been deeply impressed to learn about how San Diego Unified students perform on national tests and outpace every other large district in our state and many in the country. I'm impressed that you can talk about every school having a music program and the arts program, the STEAM program, and the pathways that I witnessed for myself. I'm impressed at the way this district has performed in helping to close the gap for African-American and Latinx students and creating opportunities. But I know that we cannot rest. As long as any one student struggles, we need to make sure we do all that we can to support them. There are people who say to me all the time that we should only focus on the students who show promise and potential. I reject that notion because I think all of our students show promise and potential, and it's incumbent on us to help them to enhance their potential. If someone had made that decision about me, I wouldn't be standing before you right now. You know, I was this shy, quiet kid from the other side of the tracks. I was raised on the free lunch program, food stamps program. I ate more government cheese than, I thought USDA was a brand name, we ate so much government cheese. My family is immigrants. My mother immigrated here from Panama to be a teacher. My father immigrated all the way from Detroit, Michigan, by way of Mississippi, and right into the US Army. I didn't see my father until I became an adult. I found him on the internet. My father served in the war in Vietnam, and as we were connected in my adulthood, he talked about the struggles that he experienced. He talked about the trauma that he experienced. He talked about why it made it difficult for him to reconnect. My family struggled with a lot of things, and poverty, and my mother was very ill. My mother lost her battle to cancer when I was six years old, and that meant a lot of upheaval for my family. But one thing in my life has remained constant, and that's been able, that's been the ability to get a great public education. And when I struggled as a student, my teachers, they never gave up on me. I struggled mightily in math, and when I struggled, teachers doubled down, and they said that they believed in me, and they let me know that my life would be better than it started. And so when people say those things about promise and potential, I tell them, I'm very conscious that I could have easily ended up in California State Prison, and instead I ended up California State Superintendent. I want us to do that for all 6 million of our students. It's why I'm pleased that this year we sponsor legislation to ban for-profit prisons in the state of California, because we should educate, not incarcerate our kids. We should make sure that each and every one of them can read by third grade, because when you, when you learn to read- when you, when you learn to read, you read to learn. And we know that there are pathways that can carry our young people wherever they want to go, but we've got to make those investments. We've got to ensure that there's early education. We've got to ensure that there are good literacy programs. That's why we named a statewide literacy campaign for California. When we named that campaign, I was fresh on the job, we didn't have any money when we named that campaign. Tell them Kai Jackson, I brought Kai Jackson back home to you all here tonight, who I'm pleased to have with us in Sacramento as one of our deputy superintendents overseeing our work in equity, overseeing our state special schools, overseeing our, our work to, to build STEAM. When we declared that we were going to have a statewide campaign, we had zero dollars in the bank. I'm happy to tell you, 37 million dollars later, I'm sorry, 38 million dollars later, we are ready to launch a full-wide statewide literacy campaign to ensure that our kids can read. And it's all because of you. It's all because of San Diego Unified. That's what I'm going to say. I'm a, I'm going to drop the mic right there and leave it, and, and leave you with this. You all have, all the people that I named are the people in San Diego I'm, I'm very impressed with, and I hope to meet more, like your great principal here. Give her a round of applause. It's an honor to be in your house. I, I want us, I want us to get this right for all students in San Diego and all students in our state. And everyone says I've been impatient, and I'm pushing. You know, I'm learning from Dr. Weber. She says, we cannot, we can't wait. And you have to ask tough questions about how you make a system better. And I appreciate that about you, Dr. Weber, that we have to ask those tough questions until we get it right for every single student. And in that respect, I'm asking, I've created something that hasn't existed. I've created a statewide advisory, special advisory, superintendent's advisory council, where I invite superintendents to help us work on major education issues in the state. And I've been so impressed with Cindy Martin, and the way she continues to humbly tell me about the things that are happening, the great things happening in San Diego. I've asked her to be the co-chair of our new statewide advisory council, our superintendent. So thank you to the entire family at San Diego Unified for shining, for what you're doing for your students, and what you're doing to help lead the way for all of our students in California. Congratulations on your state of the state tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, State Superintendent Thurman, for all you do for our students and, and sharing your inspiring story. And now I'd like to welcome our own superintendent, Ms. Cindy Martin.
Thank you so much. One person I've not acknowledged, actually two, that have not yet been acknowledged. First of all, I'd like to say thank you and welcome to our Education Association President Keisha Borden. I know you're here. This is, thank you. The other person that's not been recognized, and she wouldn't want me to do this, but I'd like to recognize and welcome my mom, Fern Segal. Thanks for being here, Mom. I'm glad you get to meet all of my friends, and you got to hear from our state superintendent. We are very honored to have our state superintendent, Tony Thurman, with us in the house this evening. It's the first time in my memory that a state superintendent has taken the time to come to San Diego in person for an annual state of the district event. This is indicative of the kind of leader Tony Thurman is. Our state superintendent is hands-on, he's engaged, he's supportive, and he believes in good schools for California kids. We are grateful for your leadership here today and every day in Sacramento. Another huge round of applause for Tony Thurman. It was just last year when we gathered for this annual event, and we were about to ask voters in San Diego for a major new investment in school facilities. They answered with a resounding yes. Measure YY passed with 65% of the vote. That's because we serve a city that understands the value of education. San Diego voters have stepped up to support our schools again and again and again. So tonight, it's our opportunity to report back to our community on what their investments have achieved. To some extent, these gains are there for everyone to see. Just go ahead and drive down Oakmont Boulevard, and you will be struck by the exciting new campus for Hoover High School, go a little bit further west, and the new Wilson Middle School. Our work is literally transforming dozens of neighborhoods with new green spaces or joint-use fields where students can play and neighbors can gather. We're also changing the lives of the people in our community who get to do that work. Our district facilities projects have generated thousands of job hours with good wages. These projects are some of the clearest ways that we're building a better San Diego. But some of the biggest changes are happening inside of our schools. The largest nationally representative and most consistent measure of student performance over time, the National Assessment of Educational Progress, has just been released. Let me share some of the headlines. KPBS, November 1st, San Diego Unified Surpasses State and Nation on Test Scores. The Union Tribune, October 29th, San Diego Unified Outperforms Large School Districts in National Test Scores. And two weeks later, the Union Tribune found San Diego eighth graders achieved more growth on national test than any other big district. And that story went on to say, not only did San Diego Unified School District outperform most other urban school districts participating in the national test this year, but its eighth graders improved their scores from when they were in fourth graders more than any other urban district in the country. And then upon seeing those results, the Council of Great City Schools leader, Mike Casserly, said, and I quote, "San Diego is one of the fastest improving school districts in the nation." End of his quote. But there are other studies that have found some strong gains by San Diego Unified students. The UCLA Center for the Transformation of Schools has singled out San Diego Unified for effective use of state education spending to improve student results, especially among historically disadvantaged populations. This report called on other California districts to consider replicating San Diego Unified's equity strategies. And then none other than the Chair of the State Board of Education, Linda Darling-Hammon, an educator that we all admire, she co-authored a report from the Learning Policy Institute that found African-American and Latinx students in San Diego are beating the odds and outperforming their peers statewide. This report deemed San Diego Unified as what they called a positive outlier in the state of California because of our equity gains that have come at the same time as our overall academic excellence has also increased. Two fabulous reports out of Stanford and UCLA. All of this, all of this is why I can say with confidence tonight that the state of our district is strong. We have kept our commitments to the taxpayers of this city, and most of all, I want to say to every parent in, in our city, your students belong in San Diego Unified schools because your students will thrive here. If you want strong academics, your students belong in San Diego Unified, the district with the highest graduation rate of all the big city districts in the state. If you want advanced technology, your students belong in San Diego Unified, where every student has a personal computing device. If you care about the arts, your students belong in San Diego Unified, where we have music in every elementary school, graduates who go, go on to Juilliard, and a marching band from Mir Mesa that will be in the Rose Parade again next year. The Arts of Apple Foundation is over there in the house. And if you want athletics, well, we're at Lincoln, home of the champions like Norman Let me add the benefits, let me add for the benefit of Norman's ninth-grade math teachers, Jenny Liu and Stephanie Brown in the house. Lincoln High develops scholar athletes. In fact, already, for the class of 2020, Lincoln has 13 scholar athletes who have been awarded And that number just continues to grow. That's just the early results. We've come a long way, but we still have to travel the distance that lies between the academic research and our students' experiences. It's not enough to say every student belongs in our schools. Our students must feel an authentic sense of belonging. Without that feeling of belonging and inclusion, all of our academic gains will be forever fragile. Division and isolation are the main threats to the progress we are making as a school community. The key to future academic gains is in our ability to meet the social and emotional needs of our students. This must be our work for the year ahead. We have to create the sense of belonging in our students by finding the spirit of Ubuntu in ourselves, that African phrase that usually translates as, I am who I am because of who we are. A person with Ubuntu is welcoming, hospitable, warm and generous, willing to share. Such people are open and available to others, willing to be vulnerable, affirming of others, do not feel threatened that others are able and good, for they have a proper self-assurance that comes from knowing that they belong in a greater whole. They know that they are diminished when others are humiliated, diminished when others are oppressed, diminished when others are treated as if they were less than who they are. The quality of Ubuntu gives people resilience, enabling them to survive and emerge still human despite all efforts to dehumanize them. That description comes from Archbishop Desmond Tutu, who received the Nobel Prize for his resistance to apartheid, and went on to lead the country's Truth and Reconciliation Commission. And here, I have to mention another brave soul who embodied Ubuntu, Fahari Jeffers, a true San Diego freedom fighter who will be laid to rest tomorrow. Fahari dedicated her life to building a world where everyone felt welcome. Fahari, along with her husband Ken Seaton M. Samachi, was a friend and supporter of San Diego schools. She understood, we are all diminished when others are treated as if they were less than who they are. We have other brave examples of this work in our own community, most importantly, our students. I like to say that our current class of student leaders, they've been called Generation Z at the end of the alphabet, because they're determined to end old divisions, to start over. These students plan on being the last generation to face school shootings like the one last week in Santa Clarita, which I much, must mention tonight, because we can never allow shootings to become normalized. The death of any student must be more than a one-day story. Our students are working to end gun violence and violence against women, the combination of which resulted in the shooting deaths of our own beloved students and their mother just a few miles from here, in Paradise Hills, just this past weekend. Across our city, we see our students standing up against hatred and division. Our students are our examples. They're the reasons our teachers, our support staff, our administrators get up early every day and stay late to build a better San Diego for each and every one of us. I always say that our aim is to create conditions across all of our classrooms where students develop their voice and agency, so that they can become actively literate, contributing, participating members of society who make a positive difference. And nothing inspires me more than our, when our students rise up, stand up, participate, and contribute. We owe our students a better San Diego. So tonight, I want to make a commitment to every student in our city. You belong in a San Diego Unified school. We welcome you. And if you are willing to work hard and give it your best, this is my commitment to you, you will go to college. And when you fall in love with the career path in high school, we will help you find a job in that field when you leave, a good job with a good wage. No matter who you are or where you come from, we will not let you fail. And I say that especially to families like mine, with an exceptional student in special education. We will help you live your best life with as much independence as possible. If you want to know more about that story, just ask my mom, Fern Segal. My older brother Charlie, her son, 55 years old, just this month, is living independently in San Diego with developmental disabilities, and he's a product of San Diego Unified. My family made a choice in 1977 to come to California because of the way we educated developmentally disabled individuals. Charlie is living with independence, and my mom is my hero for showing the path for how to serve our students with disabilities. Someday, I hope you all get to meet Charlie. When I make these commitments to our students, it's with the full backing of our Board of Education and the more than 15,000 educational professionals who support our precious San Diego Unified students. We make these commitments with the support of San Diego Community College Chancellor Constance Carroll and her Promise Program that provides community college scholarships to our students. I make these commitments with the support of Chancellor Pradeep Kozla and his Chancellor's Associate Scholarship Program that has supported over 75 of our students from at least 10 of our schools, including nearly 20 students from right here at Lincoln High to attend UCSD on a full-ride scholarship. And I make these commitments with the support of San Diego State President Adela De La Torre and the Commute College Avenue Compact for our students at Hoover High. We are a city, and we are a school system that keeps its commitments to our students. Whether you're dreaming of college, your career, and a welcoming place in our community, we support your dreams unconditionally, and that is why every student belongs in San Diego Unified. Thank you.
There's one advantage to being the president, and that is, I get to tell you when to go home. Thank you again to Lincoln High School for hosting tonight's event. Yes?
And to the musicians and singers from Lincoln and the School of Creative and Performing Arts for our entertainment for the night, the Lincoln High Army JROTC, the district's Food Services Department, the Communications Department, and the Board Services Office for coordinating the event. I want to thank you also, all of you who came out. Thank you to the superintendent, our state superintendent, the Assemblywoman. Thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. And with that, if I had the gavel, I would hit the gavel. Good night.